The logical regions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
City assessor.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have non-citizen comments on agenda-related items.
Hi, I'm Mayor. I'm Councilmembers. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Jameel Allen. I represent Portage Point Rentals LLC. We're on the agenda this evening for to be considered for the contract for the First Street Beach concessions. And we've got a couple timeline constraints we want to bring forward before you consider our proposal. We are more limited in our ability to get started due to the fact that there's some plan review constraints through the District Health Department. They, the minimum timeline right now for full plan review is about thirty to forty-five days. And in order to get operational, we can't do it unless we are using temporary permits. So I should that information with that correct. And we have applied today to do so, but we have to get about five a week to get through the season. In doing this, it limits the scope of our amendment, which we had initially proposed. So I want to make you aware of that because in order to get the full plan review, it won't happen until next season if we want to become operational. So just making you aware of it, what I have to turn the scope. It'll still be the same or similar options, just a little bit different equipment-wise and what we can share with consumer. We intend on becoming operational prior to the first, uh, month.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is James Hannah. I'm the owner of Third Life Brewing. I'm saying before you just to ask for your support in the expansion of the social district that's on the agenda tonight. With the closure of the bridge happening here soon, I think it's going to help quite a bit, at least for me, for the flood traffic coming through. Especially since vehicle traffic will likely be a lot less. So I'd just like to ask for your support on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval minutes, payroll invoices, consideration of zoning ordinance C twenty-three dash zero two, consideration of ribbons for suicide prevention and awareness. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, could you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Uh, new business, consideration of a budget amendment twenty-twenty-three dash two for fiscal year and June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. The city of Manistee is required by state law to ensure that the actual expenditures do not exceed budgeted amounts. Over the course of the current fiscal year, unanticipated and unbudgeted events and/or council-approved expenditures have occurred. The proposed budget amendment addresses expenditures associated with these events to ensure compliance with the state statutes regarding appropriations. At this time, council could take action to adopt the budget amendments twenty-twenty-three dash two for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Word.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. So I guess I'm not, I've looked at the information, but I'm not understanding some things. I guess I'm not understanding how we're so over budget on what was projected, particularly with the general fund in relations to City Hall. It's a hundred and nine thousand dollars over what was projected.
That was entirely because of the flood damage that we had, which wasn't anticipated when we did the budget, and it's fully covered by our insurance proceeds. Are there any other questions? Are you only going to run through them individually or?
I would like you to run through them. I, my personal opinion, having now sat at this council table for several years, it seems like the ink is barely dry when we finally approve the budget and it goes off to the state. And then we're always making adjustments afterwards. I don't know whether these are things that we could have caught beforehand or not, so I'd like an explanation on.
I would say all of these are unanticipated. I haven't had to run through them. We're almost a year out on when this budget was adopted in eighteen months from when it was put together, so things do change. First item on the thing has to do with the audit of the housing commission. That wasn't anticipated, obviously, when the budget was created. Council approved that, so we have to amend the budget for that.
I'll just add on that. It might go up a little bit more because we're concluding it over the next two weeks, so it might come back in July for this one as well.
Second item has to do with postage. When the protocol two passed, we had to send prepaid postage payment amounts out. The state will reimburse us for that, but we had the budget for the expenditure because of how we anticipated. Third item has to do with safe belt rental inspection fees. That's just a one-hundred percent pass-through, and that's based on the volume of rental inspections they do. We didn't have a good way to model that, so we had an estimate, but they have done more inspections than what the budget anticipated. City Hall, which comes from the Pratt household, had to do with the flood damage, which is a hundred percent coverage by, um, plus a small part of all the insurance proceeds. The fire department, we had Fire Chief Cameron retire. We also had one individual who left that we weren't anticipating in the budget. And there are a lot of contractual to sell back their accrued benefits.
Hey Dad, can you pull that microphone in? Is it on? I'll turn it on. Okay, thank you.
Next item is the major street fund and likewise the local street fund. When we budget for our streets, we have to assume what percentage of the projects are going to be done in the fiscal year and what percentage of the projects are going to be done in another fiscal year. So those one area. And we go back and forth with the engineers and Jeff on that, because it's hard to say when they're going to finish. Also, sometimes when the bids come in, they come in a little bit higher or lower, and their scope changes. So the estimates here are basically based on timing of when these projects happen. So if they happen later than what we anticipated, you have more fund dollars remaining in the previous fiscal year. They haven't been, it goes toward it in the next fiscal year. So the changes for the major local street funds have to do with timing of the planning. Building inspectors, the safe belt, that's the same thing. That's a contractual thing. We've had more activity than what we anticipated. Leads to higher fees, but it's also offset by higher revenue that we get from them. Renaissance Park, we had the sale of two lots. Those proceeds were transferred to the local street fund, but because of the transfer out, and it's booked as an expense, we have to amend the budget for that. And then the water fund, we had a twenty-twenty capital improvement fund that was going to fund three different projects. Obviously, as those projects develop, all those things change, and you have to reallocate funds between the different types of projects and that's what's going to happen. Is there any other question? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Heather, could you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of collective bargaining agreement with the United Steelworkers. A tentative agreement for a new three-year United Steelworkers contract was reached. The Department of Public Works employees represented by the United Steelworkers ratified the tentative agreement. At this time, council could take action to approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the United Steelworkers, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute this agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm just happy to see us have a budget, have that done in time. It's rare to get it done before July first, so good job.
Thank you.
Heather, could you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a contract with the Portage Point Rentals LLC to operate the First Street Beach House concession stand. The city issued a request for proposals to operate the beach house concession stand. A subcommittee of the Parks Commission reviewed the responses and is recommending Portage Point Rentals LLC be awarded the contract for First Street Beach House concessions. At this time, council could take action to enter into a contract with Portage Point Rentals LLC to operate the First Street Beach concession stand and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute this agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
How do you decide between the three?
We had a committee that was made up of several individuals, and we had the committee decide. That was, and Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, the Parks Commission, Katie from.
It was Katie and Mickey, and then two members of the Parks Commission were the group that evaluated.
So, and I think last time we talked about potentially reaching out to the lessee for, I spoke with Brian Dupree, and he spoke very highly of Jameel. And I think that's, yeah, we're very lucky to have him moving in there. I think he did a great job.
Anybody else?
You had mentioned that you'd have to limit the menu.
Yes.
Could you speak a little bit more about what you have to limit?
Well, the, the equipment required to develop the menu that we initially proposed requires different installation processes and deeper review from the health department. So in, in order to go outside of that and begin to get operational, we need to put smaller one-ten units, different voltage and average, we can't produce the items that we initially proposed in the same fashion, such as a pizza oven. We need to use a toaster oven instead, things of that nature, so we can get operational. So the, it'll be more of a concession style than what we initially proposed. A little bit more limited in its scope. Still sandwiches, pizzas, wraps, hot dogs, popcorn, coffee, and things of that nature. Just a, a more limited version.
Anybody else? Heather, could you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of expanding the social district. The downtown development authority would like to request the expansion of the existing social district. This area will allow for more establishments and restaurants to be continuous to the identified social district and to apply for a special license to allow for the sale of alcoholic beverages that can be consumed in the identified social district area. At this time, council could take action to support and approve the expansion of the existing social district. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I don't understand why we need to ex, I'm okay going east and west. I, I don't have a problem with going east and west. But the expansion south to the Ramsdale into the corner at Maple and First Street, I don't understand that. This, the Ramsdale already has a liquor license that they use during their events. There's really no need for them to be part of it. I don't understand that. And the other business that's kitty-corner is not operational yet. So it's, why would we want to extend it that way? That's my question. Is there anybody here for?
Yeah, I can, I can talk to that. So the, the thought was, we did allow, the Vogue has a social district license. The thought was, really, the downtown, you could say the Ramsdale is kind of the entrance in the south. So the idea was to include them, whether or not they had a little, we also are including road segments and public parking lots for social district licensees that have events. So the thought was it was just another option for the Ramsdale if they wanted to take advantage, but that was the reason. As far as the Chippewa auto location, just having it adjacent, just in case that ever happened. We are doing pedestrian enhancements over at First and Maple. Council approved that. So we'll, I think that was kind of, that was the thought behind it, setting it up for future use and flexibility for the Ramsdale.
I guess I have the same reservations on the Ramsdale. And I guess since you brought it up with the street, I mean, we've, as a council, have already kind of identified the street concerns there at First and Maple. So I guess I'm a little concerned about expanding that before we maybe make that corner safer. And I guess maybe Chief Glass or somebody could speak to if there's been any issues with the social district. Just because if, if we're going to expand that, then enforcement might become an issue, and how does that work? I, I don't know.
I can speak to it. There have been no issues reported to us. But I want to be clear that we're, we're going to be limited to proactive approach. We have to enforce that. And so enforcement, social district comes reactively, meaning complaints of trash, people violating it, or things associated with alcohol and such. I'm not a good staff, an officer, all night to walk the social district. Just sort of wants to put it on that. Now, feedback, I have gotten the feedback saying there's been an issue with, issue with alcohol consumption, trash, or something like that.
And then you had mentioned Mr. Gamble about parking lots and different, like, events. Is that something that we could approve on a case-by-case basis, rather than just giving, like, a blanket if it's done in this area, it's approved?
So just like with the TJ event, that was a special event request. We were kind of looking at if this would be something approved by the DDA, but I think in the interim, it would be a special event request moving forward until it's changed.
Been in a number of cities that have social districts that are large like this, and every one of them has large camera systems that are poorly moving around. They're videotaping the people on the street during festivals and events. Think of New Orleans, for example, and cops on every corner, you know, ushering down there. Sooner or later, something's going to happen, or we're going to get hit by a car, or we're going to get drunk, or we're going to shoot somebody. It'd be nice if we had some sense that we anticipate something's going to go wrong, and we acted accordingly, rather than doing all this and saying, I don't think anything bad is going to happen, so we don't need to put cameras down there. We don't need to hire part-time police officers to put patrolmen there, or if you even find them. But the point is, I think the social district was a great idea when it started, and I'm probably going to support this. But rest assured, someday, something bad's going to happen down there, and we're not going to have cameras, and I have videos, and we're going to be coming from behind and trying to catch up and figure out, figure out what happened down there. You're going to find someone intoxicated, falling down, smacked by a curb, and be dead the morning we go sweep the street. So that stuff happens in these kind of districts. So we need to consider at some point in time, providing for cameras, need to videotape these areas, and let people know we're videotaping them, because it's not only for their safety, it's for ours and for the patrons. Because something bad, crossing the highway, someone on the line, something bad is going to happen. I guarantee, I can almost guarantee it. So, but we need to do this. We need to find a way to monitor it effectively so we can at least backtrack things that happen.
And I agree, we have to prepare for the worst and help prevent. I did talk to the insurance company about our liability and things like that, and their recommendation was the signage about no alcohol behind, beyond this point. Putting a lot of those up. We're working with the DDA and the Chamber on that, so, and also the Visitors Bureau. So we'll be doing that. I've worked in, so other communities I've worked in, the St. Clair shores, they would, every two weeks a month, close down area, put up, you know, have a band, have bags, food trucks, and it's, and it was like the busiest events, busiest days for those social district licensees. But there was, we do have to take safety precautions. So as this becomes popular, I don't think we have a lot of participation right now, but as it grows, as it becomes popular, we are going to have issues. And I agree, we have to be proactive. So we'll take a look, we'll take a look at things we can add, whether it's cameras or random checks and things like that, but.
DDA should be talking about buying cameras.
That's a good point.
So is the DDA purchasing the signs, or are we purchasing the signs?
The DDA is.
Okay. And right now, we think signs is the best way to control this.
That's the initial, yeah, that's how you do it.
I guess my concern is I don't really feel like that's being really proactive. Like, we're going to say, yep, we're going to, we're going to expand it thus far, and we're going to hope that signs works.
Well, I agree with Mr. Bachman. That's why I brought up to the manager last week about checking with the insurance, because how's it going to work when people are going to walk out onto the highway, there's no doubt.
Well, but Jim, they can't because it's marked as a brown line, and they can't cross the highway. You have to use a riverwalk.
Yeah, we all know that.
Across the highway at thirty-one and River. They're not going to do it.
We know that, and that's why I agree with the camera. Are we going to put them down River Street though, because you got all the other social district way down to there? So, and then up to First Street. So you're going to need these, I agree with the cameras.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman. Councilmember Beaton.
No.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
No.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a trim for view policy. At the June twelfth, twenty-twenty-three tree commission meeting, the tree commission passed a motion to recommend a tree, a trim for view policy ordinance one oh-two dot ten asserts rules regarding trim tree, pre-trimming and subject to council approval. At this time, council could take action to support the adoption of a trim for view policy as recommended by the tree commission. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just have two things. I don't care for the provision that you have to prove that it was like that when you bought the house. And I don't care for the provision that says it has to be on your current assessment that you had a view. I don't think those are relevant to this. This has been going on for a long time, years. I've said this morning to somebody that there's a lot of people that have done this trimming on their own without any policy provision. They've just gone out and cut, and we did some investigations, and we've helped people try to hold them accountable. And they got a letter from the prosecutor saying, don't do it again. So this happens, so it's nice, as much as this has caused angst amongst people on this board, it's nice that someone is trying to work within the system to get a problem fixed, rather than just going out and cutting stuff on their own, because that's the way a lot of people do it. So I personally, if those two provisions come out, we'll vote for this. If not, I probably won't, but that's where I'm at.
I agree with Councilmember Bachman. I would personally like to see those two revisions as well. I mean, we can all take a picture and modify it. I mean, I can't, I'm not that tech savvy, but I can get somebody to do it, so my view is going to look different if I give you that picture. So who's going to prove that that was the way that that was when you bought it? Unless there's listing photos out there that show that. And again, I, I'm not quite understanding why the city assessor would have to be involved in this. So I personally would like to see those two provisions, and I'm just going to echo exactly what you said. I, I really commend, I, I know there's been some, some residents pushing this and advocating for it, and I can appreciate that. But I also really appreciate that they didn't just go out there and cut down that limb, because many of us know people that would have just went out there and cut down that limb and just thought, well, I'll ask for forgiveness later. And, and I think it's kind of sad when we think about it that this much time has had to go into this.
This policy still doesn't guarantee a limb coming out.
I know, I know, so.
There's wiggle room in here for somebody.
But when you look at other cities that have policies similar, it doesn't seem to be that big of an issue. So I don't sometimes understand why we decide that this is where we're going to put the line in the sand. And, and sometimes that doesn't make sense to me. So I would personally like to see those two provisions come out of this as well.
I would prefer to have a distance in there, because I don't want somebody that's, you know, a quarter mile away to say, there's a tree over there on city property. I would like it to come down. So I don't know where those situations may or may not happen, but I don't want to, I think it would have been more prudent to have a distance set in, in this policy.
More prudent, have a what?
A distance set.
Anybody else? Heather, could you please take role?
Well.
Did you want to amend the motion?
Can I amend the motion? Or does somebody have to do it?
You have to move to amend with the specifics that you mentioned.
Okay. I'd like to move to amend the motion to remove section A. Property owners must identify the, I'm sorry, stand by. Remove this section that says the owners have to prove they had a view prior, when they first bought the property. And I'd like to remove the section that said, current tax assessment of the property should include specific notation, including lake, river, or water view to qualify.
I'll second that. I'll second it.
Okay, so we will first vote on the motion to amend. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
No.
Councilmember Lundberg.
No.
Mayor Sullivan.
No.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
No.
So that motion, motion to amend failed.
So now we need to vote on the?
Original.
Do I need to read it again or no? Okay.
So we just vote on the original motion. Okay. Okay, the original motion. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
No.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
No.
Councilmember Pratt.
No.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
No.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
No.
Motion failed.
Now we will have a report from Ed Bradford, the Finance Director of Brownfield's Redevelopment Authority, Oil and Gas Investment Board.
All right, Mayor, members of the council, I've got three updates for you tonight. I'll try to keep it brief. Just wanted to run through the highlights. So the first section will be about the Finance and Treasurer's Office. I really want to take this opportunity to commend my staff. It's a great group of people to work with. I think they serve the public very well. They serve the city very well. A lot of fun doing the work on behalf of the citizens. So we have Heather, who's the city clerk, twenty-three years of experience. Myself, Finance Director and Treasurer, twenty-one years of experience. Laura, who's our Deputy Clerk and Payroll Administrator, has six years of experience. And Kaylee Olins, who is a Deputy Treasurer Utility Billing, has four years of experience. And I'm happy to announce that we will be starting a new employee on Monday. Laura McKenzie is going to be our Accounting and AP Clerk. So we're excited to have her on board and fill a vacancy that we've had for a few months now. Department responsibilities, we're kind of the jack-of-all-trades department, similar to the DPW, but on an administrative side. The people down there really kind of serve as traffic cops, directing people. A lot of people come to our office wanting, they need to go to the county, or they need to go somewhere else, so we try to point them in the right direction. But anything that has to do with money, whether it's investing or paying the bills, or if I have to bond or finance any projects, happens down there. We do the budgeting and the audit and the accounting. I do financial analysis as needed. We do financial reporting, a lot of reports to the states, whether that's for taxes or other types of reports. I'm the liaison to our IT contractor and do some limited frontline work on that, the IT network stuff. The facility manager reports up through our department. We supervise the assessing contract, and then our department does the Ramsdale back office. Office metrics, just briefly, busy days, we might get up to a hundred and twenty-five customers. We mail out about seventy-three hundred tax bills a year, collected about eleven and a half million into. and distributed that to the different taxing jurisdictions. We mail out about forty-two thousand water bills, cut twenty-three hundred AP checks, which pay about fifty-six hundred invoices, and a total of about twenty-seven million money. And we receive lots and lots of calls and emails. Just a few highlights since the last time I spoke to you. Obviously, every year, I have the audit on here because of the deal. We've got clean audits in my whole history here, never had an adverse opinion, and don't expect that to change this year. Successfully created and council approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget back in May. We've done a little bit of restructuring downstairs with this new position. Kaylee got a little bit of a promotion to Deputy Treasurer. We're gonna remove the accounts payable functions from the clerk because they're very busy with clerk things such as the new election laws and being able to provide some administrative support for the new building official and the new community development person. And it will help to equalize the workload down there. So, we've done a little bit of that. As I mentioned, Laura McKenzie's gonna be our new person, she starts Monday. I assisted Kelly McCall with the website refresh, which I think looks very nice, we're pretty happy with that. We're just finishing up a migration from Mitel to Ring Central on the city's phone system. We're still working through a few little issues with that, but overall, it's a better product. And one thing I'm really excited about is, is the interest income that we've been able to earn for the city. Our investments are earning a little bit above five percent right now on our, on our surplus operating cash. And that's largely a result of the Federal Reserve raising interest rates. But it, it's really helping out with the city's budget. And those interest rates are expected to rise for the next six months, probably two more rate increases, and then stabilize, and then start to go back down. So, that's good news for, for everybody. Shifting gears to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. We have a five-member board. Roger Yoder's been our chair for a while, he does a nice job. And we have new members, Vidar Liram and Corinne Fink last year. I'm the administrator, and Roman Wilson from Fishbeck Thompson, or it's not FTC, it's from Fishbeck, is our consultant. Briefly, what's a brownfield? Well, most people think of those as properties that have environmental contamination, and it's complicated to redevelop them because of that. But there's also, they've expanded that definition a lot in the city because we're a core community, can use the designation of functionally obsolete. That requires the assessor to inspect the building and say, yeah, it's not up to today's standards for the use that it is intended for. So, that can also trigger a brownfield. A lot of these are former industrial manufacturing sites, typically found in older communities like Manistee, and can be very expensive to redevelop. Sometimes two to three times as much as it would be to build new in a greenfield. A lot of times, they've been vacant, and, you know, they may be blighted. And so, why do we have the program? Well, it's to address all those things that we just saw on the last page. It can re-energize our local economies, it definitely can improve neighborhoods, and it protects the environment. That's why Eagle, you know, gives out those loans just to help clean that up. Because it's, some of that stuff is pretty nasty, and you don't want the public coming into contact with that. Just a quick rundown of the three active projects we have. Hampton Inn, there's a very recent picture of it. That is slated to open up here, hopefully, the first week of July. The construction's nearly complete, some of us did a tour of that last week. And they've got a lot of work to do, but it's definitely coming along. It's a beautiful facility, and I think the public will find it's nice to use with that restaurant up on the top floor. Gateway Project, the developer presented to council last week, around the sixth, I guess. We still have our active Eagle Grant loan. We are gonna be applying for an extension because they haven't completed all the work that they need to do. The next step in that is gonna be Work Plan Number Four, which is gonna be more extensive sampling of the sites and working on the design for any potential vapor barriers that need to happen. There will be a future brownfield plan, they've kinda had a few false starts on that, but we're expecting to get one. And this is gonna be a very collaborative project between City DDA and the Brownfield Authority. And lastly, we have Emerald Cove. You might recognize that old picture at the top, that used to be the Cove Bar at one point. And then below that, after that, it was the Dolls Reedmore, that's the building. It's slated to be a five-suite hotel with a restaurant that'll have access from both the River Street and the Riverwalk. The brownfield plan was approved, the Oprah was approved. Right now, the developers are looking for, to finalize their historic tax credits and MBC grant and maybe some other capital stack items. And the groundbreaking's gonna be dependent on that process. I did ask the developer for an update, but I didn't hear back from them yet, so, but I, once they get that lined up, I think they'll be moving on that. And lastly, we'll talk a little bit about the Oil and Gas Investment Board. Obviously, we have this great asset for the city and the residents with this charter-protected trust fund. The board oversees those investments and manages as an endowment. And, you know, since two thousand and eight, it's sent over six million dollars to help fund capital projects throughout the city. So, it's a, it's a, a thing that most communities, almost every community doesn't have. Traverse City and Manistee are the two best examples. Gas Board is comprised of Mayor Sullivan, myself, Councilmember Beaton, and then two community members, Doug Parks and Jeff Rowe. Bill, the City Manager, is ex-official, Kelly's the recording secretary, and we typically meet quarterly. Update on the actual processing plant, it used to be Aztec, it was bought by Hound Resources. We've had much better communication with the new owners. And after a little bit of a lag, the royalty payments that were in arrears have finally been caught up, so that's really good news. And they've been coming in month over month so far, so happy to report on that, that's nice to get that issue behind us. Bartlett is our investment advisor. The two lead advisors are Woody Hubel, who's on the equity side, and Troy Snyder, who does the fixed income. Our asset allocation for our portfolio is about sixty-five percent equities, thirty percent fixed income, five percent cash. And they, they rebalance if they get too far out of line with that. The last thing I think is really important, we've had a compounded annual rate of return of just over eight percent since two thousand and nine. Every year, year over year, year over year. That's a really, really good number, and it meets or exceeds all of our benchmarks. And then just a quick snapshot, as of April thirtieth, the fund was at about twelve point five million, pretty much in line with our asset allocations. Equities are a little bit higher because there'd been a run-up from the previous months. Does anybody have any questions on either the Finance Treasurer Department or the Brownfield Authority or? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we will have a presentation on tourism, Sammy Lukaskevitz.
Thank you, I'm not sure I can follow that. But I appreciate the opportunity. Out of Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Sammy Lukaskevitz, and I'm the Executive Director of what's now called the Manistee County Tourism Authority. After months of exploration and hard work by our Board of Directors, we recently adopted a new identity for our organization. So, we are no longer the CBB, or Convention and Visitors Bureau, or just the Visitors Bureau. But going forward, our organization is now called Manistee County Tourism Authority, and will be represented by a new logo for the work we do in tourism, in business, and in destination development. So, consider that Manistee County Tourism is the B-to-B side, that's the decision-making business side. And Manistee Tourism will now be our visitor marketing initiatives, so that will be our B-to-C side. So, think MDC is the business side of Pure Michigan. And we have a new mission statement to reflect our new focus. So, why the name change? Well, we're expanding our purpose beyond just being a Visitors Bureau. So, the Manistee County Tourism Authority will bring a critical voice to important resources for destination development, for the improvement of the quality of life, for the visitor experience throughout our county. And these are just some of the logos that we've operated under or have been associated with, and you'll see quite an evolution there. I started about a year ago, and when I was interviewing for the job, I had to do a presentation to the board on what my first year would look like. And as I started going through the internet to try to find a logo so I can create a presentation, I found our Visit Manistee, Michigan logo. And I love marketing and branding, and it must be my NASCAR side, but I didn't realize or understand why is our logo just peach? It doesn't reflect anything about Manistee County, it certainly doesn't bring some branding to it. And I was told that through the years, someone put it at the top of a report. So, it really wasn't a logo, it was something that was slapped on and it just picked up. But our, our job is not necessarily to take over the Project Rising Tide logos. And so, with, with respect to the City of Manistee's branding, which then evolved into the county's branding, our logo is supposed to complement those two pieces, and we're using the same color palette as well. But the other reality is, we're talking to different people. I'm talking to tourists far and wide, and you're talking to people who use the government services and the residents here. So, as our business identity is Manistee County Tourism, and our specific tourism identity being Manistee Tourism, you'll notice that the Manistee is reflective of our county's connection between two key, key elements, and that's woods and water. While also being representative of the line that goes through the center, which is a pathway, or a shoreline, or a trail, or a wave, or a fishing line. We've started exploring what all of these lines could be, and we're really excited about the implementation of it. But it's really that connection between the two key elements of Manistee County that make our area so special. And it also represents the diverse opportunities for outdoor recreation that we have here, and all the cool attractions that you find throughout Manistee County, and all the regions of our county that make this place so enticing for visitors, but also for residents. And I think it dovetails nicely with the City of Manistee's marks and also the county's marks. But a logo really means nothing without a mission and a purpose. And so, what's our mission? When I started working, I asked people, what do you know about the CBB? And the answer that I typically got was, you're part of the chamber, we're not. You put billboards up. That's true, but that's not the only thing that we do. So, my job is to make sure that my team, our Board of Directors, our hotel properties, all of the stakeholders that we work with, and people like you understand our mission. And it's really marketing, education, and collaboration that will help make Manistee a premier northern Michigan travel destination. So, the marketing side of things. Our job is to promote Manistee County to visitors, but also to locals. I, I'm embarrassed to say that I've lived here full-time since two thousand and nineteen, part-time since two thousand and fifteen, and I had no idea about some of the cool things that were due, to do in the city. I walked the Riverwalk, of course, and I always went down to the lighthouse. But I had no idea about all the wonderful resources that we have in this community. So, I hope that we can also be an educator for the locals of being a tourist in your own backyard. And I wanna be able to showcase all these great things to the visitors who come here, but also to the people who live here. Because we have a lot to be proud of. And there are so many things to discover and explore, so our messaging will build those authentic connections with guests both near and far. So, here's a sneak peek at our advertising, which, we're exploring bigger markets, also new markets that we haven't been in before. I'll, I'll talk about data a little bit later, but we're showing that we're starting to see a lot of people from Chicago, a lot of people from Indianapolis, from northwest Ohio. And so, they'll be served ads that are tailored to their interests in outdoor recreation, in going to the beach, in shopping, in some of our dining. I sat, I went to the Leddington Celebration last week, and I was sitting at one of the breweries, and I heard these two gentlemen talk about all the great things that there are to do in Manistee. And they said, but nobody knows about Manistee. Well, clearly, they did, because they were talking about us. But I really feel like everybody should know about Manistee, because this really is a great place to play, but also to live. And we're also gonna get a new website. So, if you've been to visitmanistecounty.com, you'll start to see a reskin of our website. But our website is about ten years old, so it's time for a brand-new website. And we're, we're excited to unveil some new bells and whistles. And then also a complete reskin of all of our social channels. The other thing we do is we educate and inform people. And we receive lots of data from people like MDC that show how important tourism is for the community. I'll be back in July to talk about our tourism numbers and share those with you. Everything that I'm seeing, we're really excited about for this season, but certainly for the two thousand and twenty-two numbers. And we're really encouraged as we move forward. I've also shared with some of you individually, some of the data that we get from some of our partner organizations, NEAR and AirDNA. By geofencing the entire county, and that's what we've done, so we've geofenced all of Manistee, all the hotel properties, all the attractions. We can tell who's coming in and out of our community by their cellphone data. And it's, it's pretty nerdy, and I love this stuff, but it helps us make some better decisions on who we're targeting for our advertising. And we can also share some of that data with folks on, you know, say you're hosting an event, and you wanna know where people came from, and you didn't track your ticket sales, we can go back in time and look at some of that data and tell you where your guests came from. As long as they spent four hours or more in our community and came from outside fifty miles, then we know about it. Because the chances of them opening up their cellphone within that four hours is probably pretty good. The other thing that we've recently done is we've partnered with a company called AirDNA, which helps us track short-term rental information. So, how many are there in our community? How, how much are they charging? Where are they located? How many dailies do they have there? So, it's very exciting for us, because I can share some of that information with our hotel operators to let them know about some of the short-term rental activity that's going on. And then finally, collaboration. Manistee is a really big place, and we recognize that we also need to help community partners like Bear Lake, Brethren, Wellston, Onakama, Philer Township, and all of our communities here by showcasing their strengths and their assets in an enhanced regional approach to tourism. And we want guests to know where they're going, when they go there. So, we're gonna create, oops. Sorry about that. So, we're gonna install a series of kiosks throughout the county. So, you don't have to just come to the Visitors Bureau at three-ten First Street to pick up information. And a lot of people don't have access to the internet, or they don't wanna use their cellphones. But the other component is, we've been talking to people like they're the same tourist, with the same interests, with a one single guide. And we'll still offer our visitor guide, but we're gonna work to install kiosks all over the community. And each kiosk will have my itinerary cards that have some of the different adventures throughout Manistee County. So, think of Sherwin-Williams paint cards. You can go in, and you can build your own itinerary of things that you wanna do that apply to you. So, if you wanna bike, or kayak, or fish, you can pick up information just based on that activity. Then you put it together, you have information on how long it takes to do that activity. We're looking at opportunities for Manistee for families, Manistee for free. So, all sorts of different adventures that we'll be unveiling along the way. And our first community kiosk will be at West Shore Community College in the vestibule at Maple and River Street. And Scott Ward and his team have been so fantastic to open that up for visitors to be able to pick up information in downtown Manistee, and we're super excited about it. And it's all a part of a regional approach to tourism. Also, we'll be enhancing county lines. We have four county line signs that we'll be rebranding, and we'll be rebranding all of the free barricades that you can borrow for your event from the Manistee County Tourism Authority. So, what do the next twelve months look like? Well, besides meetings like this to talk to you and share all of this information, we're building a new look with our new campaign, which launched two weeks ago. I have, I love data, so we'll be sifting through lots of data. We're launching an education campaign for the bridge closure to help educate the guests who are coming here, but also try to take some of the headache away from our restaurateurs, some of the retailers, some of the locals. I'm still meeting with hotel operators, I've been here for less than a year, and I haven't met every single one of them yet. But I'm also getting to know the retailers, the restaurant operators, and getting to know you. We'll be reskining our website, merging all of our social platforms, looking for the next destination development opportunity like Origins down at Douglas Park, and then always building partnerships. I'll be back in a couple of months again to update you on some of our tourism numbers and to share some of that data with you. And I'm always open to how we can work together, to be open and to be partners with you, because what you do is hard. And what you do, whether you know it or not, it touches tourists as well. I know some of it's not sexy, you know, voting. Um, I know some of it's not sexy, you know, voting on whatever amendment, it, that's not always fun, but your job is complicated, and you make my job a lot easier, um, by just being around and being a resource. So thank you for all you do for tourism, but also for the Tourism Authority. So thank you for the time.
This is, um, this is the coolest presentation on tourism I've seen in 25 years of being here.
I didn't even use a video. I didn't use a video right now.
I get it, but this is awesome stuff, and congratulations, I put in the, the future is awesome.
It is awesome. I, you know, I don't have any CVB experience, and some of you know me, uh, my background is in NASCAR. And my board took a big chance by hiring someone who didn't have CVB experience, and I said to them, "How hard could it be?" It's not hard. It's really fun, and there's a lot to figure out, and I recognize that I'm not gonna be all things to all people, but I've said on several occasions, "I could live anywhere in the world that I want to live." And I choose to live in Manistee, because I love it. And the little things like, our visitor guide comes tomorrow, and it is so awesome, because it has a freighter on it. I don't think we've ever used a freighter on a visitor guide. And all I know is that one year, um, during the Indy 500, I was sitting out on my deck, because I live on the river, and the Indy 500 was on, and I see a freighter come through, and it was the first time I'd ever seen a Michigan freighter. And I was looking up at everybody watching the freighter, and I'm thinking, "Why aren't they watching the Indy 500?" And then I realized, because the freighter is so much better, and it is so unique to Manistee, that how many downtowns have freighters that go right through it? So it's little things like that that get me excited. I love data, I love being able to work with Bill and share some of the insights that we have on things, and I'm just super excited to be a part of Manistee. And I do really appreciate the opportunity to be here.
I, I think it's a great presentation, and I'm ecstatic that the M in Manistee is capitalized. That has bugged me for a long time, so I'm happy that you capitalized. Anybody else?
Yeah, Sammy, have you ever talked to, I mean, I go down the river, talk to the boaters. Have you ever talked to them down there and see what they need? Because I recommended, uh, bicycles, they've asked something to get to stores and all that, and I think that's important for them down there.
Yeah, I live in Shipwatch Condominiums, I should've said 315th, I thought. I live in Shipwatch Condominium, so I, a lot of fishermen, and there's a lot of opinions with fishermen. Um, so I hear a lot. I think the fact that I've lived here for a while and have built some, uh, put down some roots, people feel like they can talk to me about some things. Um, I'm trying to get involved, to go to as many meetings as I can, um, to present things like this, to be open. I'm gonna admit that I don't know everything about Manistee. I mean, someone like you, you've been here for a long time, and as a former police officer, you probably know a lot more than I'll ever know. So I rely on people like you to help me with things like that, too, but, um, I'm a consumer also, and so I see things that, you know, I'd probably switch if I could, and I'm getting better about figuring out, who do I talk to about things like that, so. But I rely on you to help me with things, too, because we've got a board that is excited about being a part of this community. And it's not just hotel operators on the board, it's a mixture of community members and tourism leaders. And we need information. I mean, we want people to stay here overnight, and we want them to visit, too, but I also want them to spend the night here and see how great it is. And I think that trickle effect can cause people to want to move here. And tourism absolutely is economic development. I mean, I came here as a tourist to fish, and a few years later, I bought a place.
I'm really happy that you're looking at locals, too. Um, I'm really excited to hear about the kiosks, and just to get everybody really happy of living here and seeing what it's all about, so.
Yeah, it's, um, the locals set the culture here, and, you know, they're the people that guests from all over the world see on a daily basis. So, if I'm just a regular Manistee person walking down the street, and a tourist says, "Hey, where's the best place to go to the beach?", I would love it if they shared that, and they shared their experiences. So, in many ways, the people who live in Manistee are our most important constituents.
And when is the kiosk gonna be open?
We're, um, starting to work on it now. Um, we're doing it in conjunction with some of the signage that West Shore's putting up, so I anticipate that'll be up in the next month. We're behind a little bit on everything because of the rebrand, and with mine, uh, being new, I just got my budget approved today, should've been done two months ago. Um, but I wanted to make sure everything was very aligned, but, um, we're a little bit behind on some things, but I would expect here in the next month it'll be open. But I'll bring some visitor guides tomorrow, because that's when they get delivered, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sammy, you helped with the detour signage, too. I, we appreciate that.
Oh, it's my pleasure.
And that'll be up soon, next two weeks, or?
Yes. We have a, a detour, uh, plan in place. So we're installing, uh, billboards on 55 and 31. Um, we've also worked with the Department of Public Works on some signage that goes on the detour barricades, and then we'll be distributing, uh, tear pads of maps of downtown and what the detour entails to all the hotels, all the outside businesses, and then also the inside businesses. As we anticipate, guests will go to a hotel front desk and say, "I want to have dinner downtown, what's the deal with this detour?", so they need to know about it.
That's very helpful. Thank you for all your help on that.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizens comment, "This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or area of city involvement. Limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read." Yeah, go ahead. Well, you know now you're going to.
At a school board meeting, I can say that, and he won't put it in. Hi, um, I'm Sarah Harless, been here before. Um, I had sent all of you an email back in April regarding, um, blight and some questions that I had about junk pickup. And, um, some of you had responded, so I just want to say thank you to those of you that had responded. So my questions at the time were, um, I had looked back at the city's Facebook page and saw that it was moved to an every-other-year service, so the spring annual junk pickup was moved to an every-other-year service in 2010. It stated at the time that it was due to budget constraints. Um, and then it was completely eliminated in 2015, and there was no reference as to why on Facebook. Um, so my questions were, why was it completely eliminated? And then, has there been any correlating data to the number of blight complaints? So, um, like complaints that the city takes for blight where probably an officer or somebody, I don't know, who has to go out. So has there been an increase in blight complaints since our spring pickup has been eliminated? If it was due to budgets, I would ask that the council seek ways to find funds for this. Um, reducing junk or blight will only improve our city by elevating tax value, making it safer, and making our neighborhoods more welcoming. I know that we have the option to put out the one item a month, but I would guess, um, that that doesn't accommodate the need to clean up the junk or blight that someone might have. Um, and a lot of people in our city just don't have the means to, um, get a dumpster or haul all their junk to the dump, or whatever else that they could do. Um, some of you did respond. Grubba, you responded saying that the Restoration Committee was looking at cleaning up blight and helping people with their yards. The mayor, you responded saying that this was something that, um, is at the forefront of your mind as well, and that you, um, wanted that blight is frustrating, and that the courts give extensions to, et cetera, et cetera. Councilwoman Beaton, you responded, um, you must have sent this on to, um, the city manager and Jeff McCula. Um, the response that was in there doesn't really answer my questions, I guess, and so that's why I'm back here today. The response was, "I don't recall the year, it was probably eliminated eight or nine years ago. I recall several reasons. The council didn't, it said, it states, 'The council didn't like the visual of trash piles on the curb citywide for four to six weeks. I believe the cost was around $28,000 a year, and it used six DPW employees for a month.' From all the reports, the monthly large item pickup has been well-received and utilized." So, I, I guess I'm getting conflicting information, um, in terms of why, I, I still am not 100% sure why it was eliminated, and is it because the council doesn't like trash piles on the curb for a few weeks? Or is it because it's too costly, and we don't have the employees to do it? I'm, I'm just wondering.
Did I not respond to your email?
You did. Thank you.
Okay, I was waiting for you to say I said that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wonder what I said, so.
No, I, I could, I, you said, um, that I summed up the situation accurately, that my council member could respond, and I did speak to Seth on the phone about it, um, that in, that if I didn't get a reply from one of them, that I should email you back. So, yes, you did respond, thank you. Um, so, again, I'm just here, um, because I don't think my questions in the email were accurately answered. Uh, again, I'm wondering why the service was eliminated, what the correlating data is to the blight complaints that we, that the city has incurred since then. Um, and then, I'm just a citizen saying that, you know, if it, if it's due to budget, I'd ask that, I don't know what committee it is or who does it, but seek to find the appropriate, uh, appropriate funds, at least to do it every other year again, um, because I don't think that a lot of citizens have the means to do it. And then my other question would be, you know, when people are getting rid of blight, you know, I, I don't know if there's ordinances, but like, how long are people allowed to have dumpsters in front of their house to get rid of their blight? Like, is there an ordinance for that? I'm not sure. Don't know where I would look for that. But, because that's going on in my neighborhood currently, so. That said, I don't know how I go about getting the answers specifically to my questions. I don't know if I email you.
Well, look, we'll get you a better answer, because I think if you ask everybody again, you're still gonna get seven different answers on why.
Yeah.
So yes, somebody, we will get you an answer.
Okay.
And then maybe bring it up again.
Perfect. And then I just want to say, not that I want to discuss it, uh, the situation that happened in our city just a few days ago, I live three houses down, I want to commend our police department. I, um, literally live three houses away from where it happened, and felt 2,000% safe in my house while it was going on. So thank you very much. My whole family was there, and we felt completely safe, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Campbell.
I'd like to thank Chief Glass, Chief Herndon, Kelly from my office and the assisting agencies for their assistance Friday, the county sheriff and tribal police. It's a stressful situation, and, um, there's always something to learn, so we're doing a debrief, is it Thursday? But I think one thing that's come out is getting more people to sign up on Code Red to the county, making sure that's, uh, you know, what we send things out. We also use Facebook, but, um, it was something, we're getting information, um, uh, different information, and was sorting through it, investigating, and I really appreciate the chief's leadership, um, on Friday with that, so. And thanks everyone for their patience while we all worked through that. On US 31, the sewer liner was installed today, we're cutting out the services tonight, whole repair tomorrow, so we're hoping to have that lane open Thursday. Uh, major street stripings completed, we're doing striping of parking spaces, so that should be completed Thursday as well. And then crack sealing will be, will commence after the 4th of July. Updates I have.
Thank you. Chief Glass.
I just want to acknowledge a couple of things. Again, as council notes, Friday, our officers were dispatched to a violent, rapidly unfolding event, and I just want to acknowledge the fact that, uh, we had an immediate response by all the law enforcement officers in this county. But in a short time, we had law enforcement officers, medical officers, fire officers from five different counties that responded, and were able to contain this in relatively quick time, so I wanted to publicly acknowledge that, and, and it was amazing and a little humbling to have that type of response. Which is why it's so important to have these close relationships with local law enforcement agencies.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. Nobody else? Mr. Brad.
Um, I had a couple of things. So I know, um, a while back, we talked about short-term rentals at one of the work sessions, and we talked about putting, uh, ad hoc committee together to kind of discuss that. Um, do you know where we're at with that?
So I met with the ordinance committee, it's the last Monday, we discussed it. Um, their recommendation was, kind of come up with a price structure for short-term rentals. So, we're gonna, we have a series of ordinances to update, so that's, that's for, we didn't, they didn't recommend an ad hoc committee, it was mainly adding some new pricing or for, uh, short-term rentals as opposed to regular rentals.
Right, but at our work session, we talked about different, um, like, I guess, different operating procedures, it wasn't just a price point, so.
We're having another meeting, right? Before we decide anything? Uh, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be brought, and we have discussed, you know, Luddington's ordinance even prior, and I know you brought it up, and we all looked at Charlotte ways, so there, there are many options, it's true.
Okay. It just kind of seems like we talked about it, and then it went away. Um, I guess I have some pretty, um, big concerns about the blight as well, and I, I think that, you know, as mentioned last meeting, I think by council member Pontiac about, you know, when we do the one item a month, it seems to be like that falls on most holidays. I mean, the last thing you want is to be planning a party at your house, and everybody's looking at your neighbor's trash sitting out because they put it out early, or they didn't think about, oh, there's a holiday weekend and people are gonna be coming. I don't think that, if people's concern was, during the pickup was the unsightliness for four to six weeks, I guess I'd rather have that than, say, let's do one item a month, because not everybody follows the one item a month. And then I see to my neighborhood all the time, somebody puts out their couch, but yet we have three weeks until that's gonna get picked up. So, I, I don't think what we're doing is working. I'm not saying that officers aren't doing their jobs, I'm not saying there's no easy fix to this, but somehow I think we have to go back and look at what we're doing and evaluate that. And I do think that the large collection once a year, or if we, even if we did that once every other year, it was probably better for some people. You know, some of us can just take our stuff to the Goodwill, or get rid of one item a month, maybe once a year and be good, but some people have more items to get rid of, and I don't think that what we're doing currently is probably working. We had also talked about adding a council member to the Ramsdale Board. Any update on that?
No, I was, I know they're hiring a new director there, but I think at some point I was gonna take the contract over there and work through those issues.
Okay. Um, what about repetitive yard sales? So there are some people that have a yard sale every day, and it's gone on for months. In my mind, a yard sale's like a one-time thing. But I, I guess I'm not, like, to me, that's almost like running a business. So would you need a business license to do that out of your home? That's one. There's also one, um, on Fifth Street, but there's several. I mean, I had an issue many years ago when I came before council about blight, where my neighbor was doing that. It really impacts your living when that's coming, like, a couple of doors down from you. And, you know, if somebody went to go saw their house, and that's what you have going on, somebody is gonna be like, "Yeah, I don't want that." So I think we have to start thinking about it through that lens. If, if they want to run a business, that's fine, but I guess I feel like there's a procedure for running a business, and I'm sure they don't have a business license to do that. So, I just feel like we gotta look at that.
Councilmember, if you could send us the addresses, I'll, I'll take a look at that.
Didn't last summer, someone did like a special use?
For multiple sales or?
It was a temporary activity permit, something like that, yeah.
Okay, I will get you the addresses on that.
Thank you.
That's no problem. And then, um, I just have two more things. Um, any update on where we're at with street repairs? I know I've, I, I feel like I'm the broken record about the post office street, but that is horrible. It is an accident waiting to happen, and I, I don't know how we haven't gotten that patched yet. I feel bad seeing it, but it's almost the 4th of July, so I, I just feel like that speaks volumes. And then lastly, I just want to thank, uh, Chief Glass and all other law enforcement for all of their work. The speediness and the communication definitely shows that you guys are working together, and I think that's great for our small community, so, thank you.
Mr. Frosky.
According to the, the incident Friday, I just happened to come down Pine Street, and nobody had said that there was any incident at that time, until I got down, when I got caught up in that thing. I was stuck right in the middle of it. I was stuck right in the middle of it. Ed, I want to ask you, the Rotary people came to me and said, a couple of years ago when they disbanded, money was put aside for a roof for the, some Rotary building. And they were wondering where it was at, if you know where it's at.
Councilmember Grabowski, we did get money when Rotary dissolved. I'd have to double check, so I don't want to speak out of hand. But I believe it's still setting in the escrow account. It hasn't been spent.
Well, they were asking me, so I can tell them.
I'll verify that and let you know.
Okay, good. Thanks. I wanted to ask Sammy, do you guys anticipate any, putting any like bikes? I've asked the city before about putting bikes or something down. A lot of the boaters say they have no place to get, to get over to a store or something like that. Do you guys have any plans to work with the city and get something for their visitors? Well, I've asked the boaters, you know, if they have, they would like to know if they could get bikes or something, a cart or anything to get to a store, going with their boat. Do you guys have anything in, because we've talked through about it with the manager and that.
And I think part of the Marina project, they donated two bikes. Our insurance had a little bit of an issue with it, but we were, with an inspection process. We do have two bikes, but I don't know. I don't know of another, you know, adding another mode of transportation's been discussed with the visitors, with the Tourism Authority.
Yeah, we haven't heard that. I mean, it's not something that would be out of the realm, but it's certainly something we can talk to the board about too. I think too that there's a golf car rental company now that might help with something along those lines, but.
Yeah, they were interested in that.
Okay. I'd love to see more people around the streets too, so.
Have you got us that budget for the Ramstow yet?
Not yet. I will get that for you.
Okay.
Josh, okay. Ms. Pontiac.
Yeah, so I know, Sam, you mentioned the air DNA. And I know we had a company come in and say we were going to hire and then we didn't. But that was the first time I heard that. Is that something that we could collaborate on and see their numbers?
So, yes, and Sammy did share some information about those short-term rental data from that, so that's been helpful. So we kind of lucked out where we don't need to purchase that necessarily because that data Tourism Authority is providing, was able to provide to us.
And then I just wanted to bring up Gus Smacker was something that Luddington always hosted. And I guess they're not going to host that anymore. And so I kind of had the idea of maybe them coming to Manistee. That might be a good thing to have here for tourists and revenue. So I know that they come in, bring their own courts, but that might be something that we could add.
Somebody told his papers, I might saw a report that they were talking about coming to Manistee.
And I spoke with Scott today and Councilwoman Lundberg sent it to me. So I, it sounds like they talked to the chamber. I contacted, they contacted me today. So because we're going to look at options for 2024. So it just, just happened today where I was aware. But yeah, I think it's, it can be a good thing to bring people to Manistee. And we probably have different areas that would be nice for them to play.
Okay, because I was thinking maybe the Parks Commission and then the basketball team at the high school could.
And get some volunteers to the NRBC. So I think it's a, yeah, something we'll look into.
I want to echo, great job with the police department, every agency. We guys did a really good job. Thank you.
But?
I just want to tell the people, the Old Kirk is sponsoring different shows during the summer. And on, starts July 1st, from the Ramstow, the Vogue and the Old Kirk. And they have different acts, which are kind of, they have a show at the Vogue and they have different people come in, singers and all that at the Kirk. And they're also sponsoring having seven of Manistee important places to have visitors go see over the Fourth. And one's the fire department, the Ramstow, different places, which will be, you know, people want to go see important buildings, to have tours of them and all that. So I just told Ken Cooper I'd mention it here and so it gets out for people if they want to go see things when they come to town. Thank you.
Mr. Bachman.
Just want to say, I spent the weekend at Gus Smacker working at my tan. We were told the participants that they were moving to Cadillac next year, that they've committed to Cadillac. So maybe it's available, maybe it's not. And just to shout out to the chief and the chiefs together, the leadership it takes to command an event like that is not something you just pull off the shelf. It's not something you have a book. It's something you have to pre-plan for. You got to think about it in advance and you got to put it into action. I know that Chief Glass had a plan to surround it, contain it, de-escalate it, and then clean it up. I know from talking and that's, that's his model. He certainly had the resource to surround it and contain it. EMS was wonderful. But you know, you can't neglect the fact that every city employee on duty that day contributed somehow. DPW trucks, city hall staff, your staff, you contributed that. So not, it just wasn't a police fire event. It was every single employee working, and probably a dozen or so that weren't working, that came in and contributed that. So kudo to all those people who were getting that done, not just, not just one. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Ms. Beaton.
I too would like to echo everybody's comments about the efficiency that was, that you handled the situation. I truly believe that we have the best resources here. I just love everything that you guys do. It's great. I want to talk about blight. One of my problems with blight, and maybe this was partly due to the trash pickup, but honestly, when people buy dilapidated, rundown homes, their tendency for a building, their tendency is to start the interior work, interior work first. And it bothers me because sometimes you wait years before you see an improvement in the outside of it. I would like to see the ordinance committee work on something to bring that more into a better timeline. Because that's what people see. You think of blight, you look at a messy yard or siding falling off or something that needs painted. And it's all on the outside. It's not just necessarily the trash on the street that's causing the blight. So I think it's important that we do that. I think it would help a lot downtown too if we had something that said that they had to work on the outside first. They don't have to finish it completely, but clean it up. I'm done.
I was just wondering, 2015 or whenever it was that that got removed, does anyone know anything about that? The trash pickup? What happened? Do you know what happened?
They took and they had two collections, one in the spring, one in the fall. And it got to be 28,000. The city at that time thought it was way too much. And so, I don't know if you remember George, they took and they cut back on one. They had one for a while and then they decided to go to the dumps, to the dump, putting out different things. And they did that and you could put one thing in, it's been for a couple of years now. And, I mean, everybody's complained about the junk on the streets. I've complained with mattresses sitting all winter. And I know Mr. McCula has gone out and sent letters to these people to put it out at the, you know, when the junk pickup at their month. And so we've been going through this thing for a while now of what to do with it.
Just curious, she mentioned something about the correlation between blight and, you know, now we don't have any way for people to get their junk out. So it seems like maybe we should think about that a little bit. Or if we can't, if there's a way we can get dump, a dump situation for them, I don't know.
Or do we go back there once a year again just to clean up the yards or whatever?
I could see it.
I think there's only one thing you could put out. I think we've put out, I might, I personally put out more than one thing on the beginning of the month. I think I've been, but, you know, it's never, you know, a whole pile of stuff. But, you know, it's a little bit more than one thing, but.
Yeah, I think it's ridiculous, the one thing that if people put it out, it will literally sit there till the following month, so.
I wonder what the cost is.
That's, we can get a quote.
Now, or what did we pay? Because work, we're fineing $28,000 multiple times for different things. So I guess I'd rather have that be a return. If it's $28,000, I think $28,000 will spend.
Other than that, yes, I would like to echo what everybody else has said. Thank you for keeping our city safe. I can't tell you how many people from out of state heard what was going on and were calling me, what's going on? What's going on? And it was handled very quickly and very efficiently. And we got a robo-call on our landline and it was, it was, I just felt like, you know, it was handled very well. So thank you.
So I just have a couple of things. I agree with Mr. Pratt on the yard sales. I'd like to look into that because the one-hopper street is ridiculous. It's all summer long, all day long. The blight, I agree that we need to look into that. I don't, I can't talk about it more. My swear jar is already full. So I'll pass on that one. And then my last question is, have any update on the basketball court?
On the basketball court?
If the trench is fixed yet?
It looks like, yeah, they filled in where they kind of did a trench. And there is some where, you know, it was Parks Commission was working on it. There were some areas, but I think it's, it's okay now. There is a ledge where it was edged, but it's definitely cleaner. I mean, it was power washed.
Is it fixed where there's not a dip in it?
We didn't, we didn't regrade the park around it, if that's what you're asking.
They made a channel for the water to run off on the sides. People are going to trip over that, then they cut the edging around it. And so you got that high above the, so you know somebody's going to run out.
I just, I think it's ridiculous because we approved projects for them to do. And if this was reverse and the DPW did that, we'd have 10 people in here screaming at us that, you know, the way that it looks and everything. So I hope that it is looking better than it was a couple of days ago. That's, that's all I have.
And I do think they should have prior approval before doing projects like on public property.
Yeah, we've said that four times now. So that is all I have on that one. Consideration of a closed session pending litigation and potential settlement. City Attorney George Saylor recommends a closed session this evening to discuss pending litigation and potential settlement regarding Chetuk versus City of Manistee as permitted by Section 8E of the Michigan Open Meetings Act pursuant to MCL 15 dot 267. A two-thirds rule to vote of the members elected, five, is required for this closed session. At this time, council could take action and proceed to close sessions as permitted by Michigan Open Meetings Act, Section 8E. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Heather, could you please take a role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Okay, so we are back in open session.
Consideration of a mediator proposed settlement for Chetuk versus City of Manistee lawsuit. At this time, council could take action to accept a proposed settlement amount for, in the amount of $83,000 for Chetuk versus City of Manistee lawsuit. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Heather, would you please take a role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.